Want to talk for just a minute about the open space?
Yeah, sure.
I mean, I understand we're just gonna, we're just gonna kind of extend the one we already got. Not try to make any changes, but we should go through and read it, see if there's anything we recommend.
Sure. Since it, um, it's the purpose of this is to extend the deadline for the open space and recreation plan that we did in 2020. Um, now that open space plans are given 10 years, this one was only given seven because that was the standard at the time. So the state is allowing us the opportunity to extend the deadline, um, another three years. But in order to do that, we're just asked to look at the action plan, which is all of the various goals that were set at the last one. And none of this is binding and all of it would be re-reviewed when we formally update the next plan in 2030. But, um, they just ask us to give a status update on each of the items. And a status update can just be that there's no status update available at this time. We really don't know what we're doing with it, that's okay. So what I did was I shared it with the various departments, um, that were involved, um, previously and who had, uh, you know, responsibility for each of these items. In some cases, I did the updates work with the town administrator on it. I shared it with, um, Marty Tilton, who, um, discussed it with Rita Mullin, um, just because many of these items are for the parks, um, the recreation department. Um, so we've drafted, um, all of the updates. The only, um, ones that are missing at this time are conservation. They have about five in there that still need to be filled in. So I just got all of this, um, together from some of the departments, much of the information today. So I just dropped it in. So if you want more time with it, um, we can, you can take the next couple of weeks and read through it. If you haven't already, I understand because it's a pretty long document. Um, and you can let me know if there's anything you'd like to add or change. Um, Warren, you had mentioned previously that we should talk about the Hillview, um, to, to plan for that when we, when we do the update, um, in three years. There were a couple of other suggestions that came up from Marty and Rita as well that we would add. Um, so the goal is, so this all has to be finalized and submitted to the state by the 30th in order for us to qualify for this extension. So we're just looking to have, um, each of these, um, just, you know, an answer for each thing. And of course, when 2030 comes and we're doing the real, you know, the formal update, all of these can be revisited. Um, so that's, uh, kind of the purpose of this.
Do you think we should, uh, talk about some kind of, uh, of a long-term plan for the Hillview area? And, uh, maybe, and then make a recommendation to add some kind of, some verbiage in there to say that we think this is a, an opportunity to do something. I mean, that, that, that's like, I think that's kind of a, a long conversation and it really, uh, it really is going to require the Hillview Commission to be involved in it, I think.
Well, yeah, and I think that that would happen. I mean, that's something the Hillview Commission can take on anytime, but in the meantime, we can add to the action, the goals and actions, um, that we would like the Hillview to be looked at.
We'd like to do something about it.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Right, because these are very.
Simple enough, they're simple enough to put in, I suppose.
Yeah.
Because, um, I know, I mean, I, I, I think there's probably, uh, more than a few people have a few ideas. I mean, the thought of losing that whole, that whole facility is to, is, I mean, I don't like it, but I do understand why we have to do it, so. And I know we're probably gonna hate to do it, but, uh, but then what do we do with that site? I mean, do we, do we put a, build another facility there? Do we build a simple facility or, or do we try to put something on a little more? Um, in the past, that, in the past, that was quite the place. I mean, there, you could go there for, for dinner. They had reasonably placed dinners and it was always well-attended, a lot of people, especially a lot of the older people because they could afford to place. And, um, um, so that kind of, that, when that went away, that was a bit of a loss for those people, but, um, but is it reasonable to put a, 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 a facility like that there? Is there enough work in the function industry to, to support putting something there? And I understand that building is junk zone, it's gonna go, that's it. But what do we do? We just plant grass there or what do we, or, or what do, what do we do? Um,
I thought there was something in their plan that they had in mind for that area, wasn't there? And was there gonna have some card storage or something else?
Small snacks, snack shack or something, I think they wanted.
Yeah, any card storage, I think, John, I've heard that too. But yeah, I agree, nothing, nothing that, um, grand, you know, it seems very minimal.
Yeah, I mean, you know, is it a, uh, there were kids from all that were surrounding towns who went to their senior problems there. I mean, it, it, it's a venerable place and it's had quite the history. And to lose it, you know, and not, not have any plan to do anything about that, that was kind of a, that was kind of, I saw the Hillview Commission whatever, they just, they're just reacting to the fact that they have to tear it down right now.
The operator too, at the town meeting made a passionate, you know, presentation that showed that they're actually booking, making money or whatever. So it seemed like he came down to the facility. And I guess just in very bad repair, all the cost of those repairs would, would be too much and not worth it.
That costs you bringing up the cost.
So, so might, so what I, what I, to get to what I was saying, what I was thinking about, we said, uh, and this is something that I've seen in a planning magazine many times, where you, uh, do a public partnership with a developer, comes in and builds a facility.
Absolutely.
And, and that we might want to think about putting out, uh, can, or convincing them to put out an RFP of some kind. Or, or a public-private partnership where they could build something that would, that, where they would have some control over, so they could keep it busy, keep it working, you know, keep it making money. And at the same time, offer that facility to the town and to other towns to continue to provide, you know, a location for, um, for these events, for these graduations and all these special events, which, uh, I actually ran, I ran a couple of events there myself, uh, Valentine's, masquerade party and stuff like that, it was a lot of fun. So, um, so I have a special connection to them, so. So anyway, uh, anybody got any, uh, any other comments on that? I mean, I think we need to.
I just had a question for Danielle. On the, one of the lines here was the canoe kayak access thing. It said no further action. Was it just themes that's something they're not gonna do or is it just it needs a comment?
Um, that was the comment that Parks and Rec gave to me, but I didn't ask for notes on that. For the ones that I filled in, my, my stuff is in red and I kind of put notes for each thing as an explanation. Um, much of what Parks and Rec, um, provided, gave a status update, but not necessarily notes. So I can ask for some explanation for that one, um, because I, I don't know.
Yeah.
So I, I live on Eisenhower and I own canoes. And I have kids who would like to canoe. It's not great. It's, it's very overgrown with lily pads and it's pretty shallow. I see people fishing, I've never seen anybody fish out of it.
A live one, thank you.
Well, is that, is that line just for Eisenhower? Cause it could, it uses Eisenhower.
It just says included.
Yes, so that's a good example, but that's a good example, like it's.
A better boat access, a big park pond would be nice.
Yeah, exactly.
Or at the river.
Right, yeah.
There's definitely parks around town where access could be better to our waterways.
Yeah.
We do have the problem though, sometimes in the summertime, not much water in the waterways.
Right. I mean, Martin's Pond's always good.
Yeah, yeah.
But, you know, you can't really canoe down the river some summers.
There's a couple of, there's a couple of points you can get in the Martin's Pond.
Yes, I put a boat in there, yeah, it's, it's just not, it's soft. It's, it's kind of like a, a firm beach at best. I mean, there's not a lot of boating going on there anyway, but, uh, it was nice for me to learn how to use the boat that I bought.
Yeah.
Cigarette boat?
Yeah.
No, sixty-nine glass bar tri-hull. And I was my first time boat owner and it's true, your first day and your last day are the two best days of boat ownership. I kept it for three months and then it did, served its purpose and off it went.
Get more info about that. And for all of these items, none of these are the final end of, end of the line for any of them. All of them can be picked up again and revisited once the new plan is done and.
Danielle, I have a quick request. Is the draft that you have, is like twenty pages or so?
Yeah.
Is there any way I could get that printed out? And, and I only ask that because I, I really would like to go through these line items and just kind of, take a really close look at them.
Yeah, sure.
You know, I've, I've, I've gone through it a little bit, but I think it really does take some time.
Yeah, I totally drop it in this.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, there's a lot of stuff here that, that, some great ideas to, you know.
A few copies would be nice. Like, I don't have access to it while it's flying. I could go through it while I'm sitting there watching the airplane do its work.
Okay, I'm sorry. Tonight I will print copies. Does anyone else want a hard copy?
Thank you.
That's awesome.
Great. Great, I will, um, is it, yeah, you can just print the other one.
Double-sided or mine?
I'm fine with double-sided.
Great.
I, I, doesn't matter, however you do it. It's easy to view.
That's all right. It's just anything.
Double-sided.
Oh, double-sided, it saves the town money, yes.
Oh, good, for sure. Oh, I should, one other thing I should say about this. We were initially told that the select board and CPC needed to give a letter of endorsement for this update, but we don't. It's really just kind of an internal, like, updating it until carrying it to the next three years. But we can't really want to, but it's not a requirement. So I just wanted to mention that. So I'll put this back on the agenda on the sixteenth and we can wrap this up then and.
Okay, awesome, thank you. One other thing too, the Hillview.
Yeah.
To, to Warren's point, I think for a town to have, uh, like a function hall that's not a moose. You know what I mean? I mean, you love the moose, right? Everybody loves the moose, not long enough to have to, yeah. But, uh, but what an asset, you know, to do like, to have a partnership with a company that would, have something with a little more.
Well, the draw, the thing is, the, the golf course draws the clients. I mean, it's a real win for, uh, a private, a private entrepreneur who comes in there and says, I'm gonna build this great place. And I got hundreds of people coming by, you know, that who will come in and use my facility. If it can be run in such a way, um, um, to be profitable.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, um, so I think, I think it can be done. And, and a lot of, a lot of those public-private partnerships that I read about in Planning Magazine, uh, are very successful, um, and beneficial to both sides, you know? So, um,
How does that process, do we, as a committee, make recommendations to Hillview as far as what we'd like to see?
Well, yeah, okay, so at the beginning, in the beginning, yeah. Beginning, we would talk about a concept. And we bring the concept to the Hillview Commission and see if they're, because they're really gonna make the final decision on it. Not, unless they think this is a very great idea and they're gonna say, yeah. You know, if you're gonna put it together, here's, here's some of our requirements, you know? But there's also some, um, with some caveats here that I'm not really totally clear on. And one of them is that, uh, the money that's made by Hillview has to go in, back into, um, has to go back into recreational things, I believe. There's some kind of caveat there. That's why we can use it for some things, but not for other things. We've got it in lieu of taxes, we can get money from them, from Hillview, uh, from Hillview Commission, uh, from that enterprise, Hillview Enterprise. So that means that the project that we, you would propose would most likely not include the Hillview Commission as a funder of it. Um, but just a public partnership with the town and the, and the uncoordinated developer would be to build that project.
It might be a great place for, uh, a joint use, senior center, youth.
Well, there's a couple of reasons.
Center, come together.
Well, there's, there's a couple of reasons.
With evening.
One of them, one of them is that it means that the money generated by the Hillview Commission, by the Hillview Enterprise, can still go to pay for the things that it was, was destined to go for, and that is recreational things. So, um, so that money would still, because if you tried to fund it out, they don't make enough money. They made it clear. They went through all the numbers and said, we don't make enough money to fund, uh, three, five, six million dollar, you know, renovation there, you know? But, um, but a developer who's looking at it as a site, but taking, put out a, uh, a, uh, a facility in, um, you know, and the town would be to partner with it, not the Hillview Commission.
Something like a ballroom space or an event space for the evenings and maybe, like I said, a, a, maybe a joint because it's a senior center, we've got a lot of talk, we need a new one. And something where they and the youth could get together.
That, that's, that's an interesting concept, that we could try to, that we could go, try to combine those two things into that location. Because, um, um, it is, it is a, uh, location that has, well, I don't know if it has enough open space available to, for other things besides golf here, you know? So that might be, that might be a sticking point, where they would wanna, uh, not have enough space here. But, um, but it certainly has all the parking and everything, you know, for, for doing events, like especially nighttime events when, you know, all of the people with balls of glow can, can play all their night, um.
I bet we can make that happen, I bet they can make that happen, bowling balls.
No, we, you know, we're gonna send them all to you at nighttime, see.
Right.
And then we use the facility for.
We'll ban glow-in-the-dark golf, uh, golf balls.
And then we use that, then the facility could be used for all the different events, like nighttime events, so. So I mean, that's something that probably would, so, 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 the point here is that probably not Hillview Commission, probably the select board, will always bring to the Hillview Commission first and make sure they have no serious objections to it or want to have something important to the, um, the situation. Then the select board will probably be the next step. And see if, if they would be willing to get involved in that, then an RFP, and try to decide what we want, what we actually want. And, and I, and I would suggest that we look at what some other towns have done to develop new properties like this with a partnership and see how they did it and try to learn from them.
Sure.
Do a good job. So that's fine, that's, that's what comes to my mind. So anybody have any more comments on that? Let's, let's try to, let's try to move in that direction.
Um, yeah, I don't.
Initially for this, we're just gonna say.
For this, yeah, please plan for the Hillview.
We just, we just recommend that the Hillview, that property we looked at, that we develop some kind of, uh, uh, use for that is beneficial to the town. I think that's the way to put it. We know how to develop some kind of use beneficial to the town.
Yeah.
There you go, how's that?
Perfect.
That'll do it. All right, um, we got a few more minutes here. So the town-owned land.
Yeah.
We go through this all the time.
Every so often we get requests, um, the select board has had requests for people to purchase properties. They will send us a list and we're asked to, um, first, I'm asked to fill in how much frontage has been had, if it's on an accepted or an unacceptable way, et cetera. Most of, um, this spreadsheet that I put in your folder here is, uh, questions like that, that I've just filled in that information.
Clarification.
Yeah.
The listing you gave us, those are all act, actually active requests.
Yes, they haven't been asking us the last few years to review the entire inventory we've been using every single year.
That's a lot of requests for property.
I think they've been building up for a couple of years now, so.
And some of the, some of the values they put on them are somewhat significant.
Yeah, yeah, um, so the part that I wanted to ask you about, that, um, the, the, the objective questions are how many feet of frontage, et cetera, those I filled in, zoning district, et cetera. But, um, I have gone back to previous reviews from the CPC to see if there was any use that this board was interested in for those properties. And I filled in where they have been, very few of them had any previous use identified. So the, my purpose really in bringing this to you is to see if anybody had any thoughts for uses that we would want to tell the select board, hang on to this land, don't sell it at this time.
Well, this, this takes, this, this, um, this is not a short process. I mean, to go through and read all those, I, I'm a full-dutcher. You go through and read them all and then, and then try to decide where they are. I mean, the, the, the thing, the immediate things that came to mind when we did this before was especially over in, in the, in the Mark's Pond area, we're gonna need a piece of land for a lift station. Because when we sewer that area over there, if we sewer that area over there, it's probably gonna have to go down by the bottom of the hill and then pump it back up to the main line in the street. So it's gonna have some piece of property that's big enough to support a lift station is gonna be necessary for us to hold on to. So determining which one of those is the right one.
Many of these, I mean, many of these are properties that have, but other properties and people have just indicated we would like to have this. It's wetlands, we never want to see it dip pool, things like that. That's what most of these are, um, but.
And I'm, you know, I'm fine with it. I mean, I, if, if somebody goes to buy a piece of land and add it onto their piece of land and that way, cause I don't, you know, I don't. It's already fairly dense over here, so I don't see a lot of building being, you know, and if we do put sewer in there, everybody's gonna, every, every one-bedroom house wants to turn into a four-bedroom house, you know? And it would just, it would just make mansion the whole area, so. But that's gonna have to be done very carefully, very carefully with some controls in place. So, um, um, so, I mean, you still have to make sure that we hold on to a couple of pieces of property. But stringer, now we funds those out, that's not easy, it wasn't easy before. And, uh, we had a couple that we looked at and we, uh, but I don't, but, you know, I don't know if we, if we logged those, I mean, there's a history of, uh.
I know the DPW has the history of properties that were considered for waste water disposal, and those are not.
One of them, St. Teresa's Road, we said, oh, that's, that's, that's really high, we said, that's not a bridge from the station, that's already above everybody else. So that, that came off the list pretty quick, so.
Right.
Which of course we didn't allow some, so.
Right. Um, but the rest of these are, I mean, I, I know the DPW is aware of those larger properties that were identified as being possibly beneficial to a future sewer system. Um, I don't, I mean, I don't believe that any of these are on, and the DPW is also asked to review these. So, um, these are, I mean, each of them, I have noted where the CPC has previously discussed other uses. For example, Three Carpenter Drive, we had done a big study looking at possible, uh, senior affordable housing. I've noted that, um, I also noted that it didn't go ahead due to neighborhood opposition, um.
Yeah.
There, most of these haven't been discussed for any particular purpose, but a few had been. One or two were in the affordable housing overlay district, I noted that. Um, most of the rest of these have not, just no future use has ever been identified. Um, so if there, I, I guess, you know, if there is anything, I know the select board does intend to discuss these soon. I don't know what meeting, but it would be something upcoming. So I did want to give them any comments if we had any particular concern beyond what I've already.
So, uh, I, I know it's a, it's a, one of those, it's a, a lot, a lot of stuff in there to look at, but need to see it to my sort. So, um, do we want to, um, kind of have everybody take a quick look and do, love to spread, spread it out. So we, I'll, I'll, uh, just read through it and see what you think and maybe look at a couple of places. Go ahead, Jeff.
So I have a question, um, so this is all the property that the town owns?
No, this, these are really ones that people have requested to purchase. But they've asked this select board to consider selling them, um.
Oh, I got you.
We have a huge roster of town of land.
I know, I was gonna say this doesn't look that, like, that.
And all, sorry, all these assessed values are for the whole property, the part, not for just the parts that they're requesting?
Um, this, I think all of these requests are being treated as whole parcels. So they've given the size of each that's been requested. So for example, three-twenty-two Main Street is the tiny strip, it's fifteen hundred square feet, assessed at thirty thousand dollars. Um, I just noted that this had, I mean, it, it is, I think at one time was looked at as potentially being used as a sidewalk, where there is no sidewalk on Main Street. So I just noted things like that. Um, some of these really wouldn't be usable for anything else, um.
Are any of these, Danielle, I have a question for you, like, I, I'm not, okay, approximately ten thousand square feet. Are any of these buildable lots that?
Um, I mean, potentially, if they were combined or if they were combined with others. Um, so that's why they've put the reasons why people want them. So usually when, when the select board sells a piece of property, they have a list of conditions and they almost always include may not be used as a building lot or, um, may not be combined with another lot to be built upon. If somebody is indicating that they do want to build on it, then they would have to consider that. But usually they're sold with a restriction to not build on it. That's generally what they do.
Unless you want to put it into you.
Yeah.
Then you can get that.
Yeah, that could be, that could, you know, that could be a thing, you know?
I know that, that's why I'm, I'm, I'm just curious, uh, like which ones are buildable and which ones are not and.
Yeah, if adding, if adding a piece of land onto your existing piece of land allows you to meet the requirement that it meets the same setbacks as the house, and now you've added a piece on the back, now you, now you have the set piece of house originally had and you can, but then, I don't know.
I mean, that also means, that also means more tax revenue as well.
Yeah, I'm not sure how many, that, that might be a thing, but I, I, my, my, my gut is that it would probably not be ten or fifteen of them and that's it, you know?
Yeah, no, I understand, but, yeah.
Might, it might not be an impact, or he, may, may not be impactful in, in the long run.
I do want to correct something I just said. It looks like these are whole parcel values and there are a few requests where, for example, Three Carpenter Drive is ten and a half acres, but they're only looking to purchase ten thousand square feet. The assessed value was five hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, that's not for ten thousand square feet, that's for an acre. So, um, I, that's.
That one was a best scratcher, so.
Yeah. That was my question, yeah. Are there, are there opportunities for the people who've made these requests? Because you kind of said it was an all or nothing thing, that, like, could they buy ten thousand square feet of this ten-acre lot?
Potentially, I mean, the people who are looking to buy, I think it's eight Autobahn Road, did an A and R. Um, or, or like they would need to come in showing the lot split. So usually what they'll do in that case is they'll come in, they'll tell the select board they're interested in purchasing a portion. If the select board wants to consider that, they might say, okay, go have your engineer draw up an A and R plan for us to look at and consider. Then they'll come here, then we'll have a joint application between the town and the private owner and we'll jointly, you know, sign off on an A and R if we think it's appropriate. That's what happened, I think, with this Autobahn property, um, or another property on Autobahn. Um, and then they have the option to purchase that. These are all, I think, option, some of these might be town meeting decisions. It depends on how the town actually acquired each of these pieces of property, so.
A lot of them are tax title too, so.
Many of them are tax title, I think actually, so Lydia, um, Eldridge, who's our consecration agent, who's now, that's now a full-time position, also is, um, in charge of kind of management of town-owned property. So she's kind of heading this, so she's the one who pulled together the information that was provided to us in the, the blue portion of this and has asked for everyone's feedback on it. So she provided the assessed values and all of the basic information on it. Um, the comments she's asking for from us have to do more with, do, do we see any future use? Is there some reason we should tell the select board, please don't sell this because we have something else in mind for it?
Well, I think probably the best thing to do now that we've talked about it is for us to all look at it, maybe next meeting, bring in any recommendations you might have. It'll give you a chance to, um, look at something and then go, maybe even drive by and take a look at some of these things that might not want to be, uh, moved, moved away from us, you know? So that's probably the best way to handle this at this point.
So I also have a question too, like, when you have an assessed value. And so right now, Danielle, none of this property is generating tax revenue for the town?
Right, because we own all of it.
Okay, so it's generating nothing, all of this?
Right. We own all of it.
The assessed value may be eyeing the sky.
Well, that's what I was thinking, because a lot of this could be like a big giant rock in the middle of nowhere and somebody's just, or whatever, whatever the case is.
Had a flat plan with a piece of paper and you go there and it's like, there, you go ahead, yeah, you're right.
Yeah, a lot of it's probably not even buildable, whatever, I mean, um, okay.
Yeah.
So that's just, and then how do, how do they, like, the value, the assessed value, like, so, say that Three Carpenter that you were talking about, like.
Yeah, how do they connect with that ten thousand square feet?
I don't know.
I think, I think basically what they're doing is they're eyeing the sky.
That's crazy.
They're just looking at it as if it was a.
That's a full house log.
Yeah, yeah, as if it was a buildable lot, they're gonna create a buildable lot, even though we would not let it be a buildable lot.
Well, that's, that's ten, that's ten and a half acres, so.
Yeah, but you just said that was for what they want, right?
No, 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 what I, I just said I had to correct myself to say that these are whole parcel values as far as I can.
That's the whole part, yeah.
I, I don't know, I mean, I don't know how to.
Assess values are usually lower than they are, but still, and a ten acre is for only five hundred is crazy, you know?
Yeah.
It should be way higher.
I would think that it should be. Uh, maybe it was assessed before there was access, there is actually no frontage there.
When I read through it, when I read through it, Jeff, I was, I was, you know, I was saying, I don't think, and there were some that were like, uh, five thousand, six hundred dollars. And I'm like, oh, you know, that's probably reasonable for that particular, but why is, why isn't one next to it three hundred and ninety-five thousand or it's only five square feet more or something, you know?
Yeah, it's bizarre.
And so, so I don't think, I don't think we need to look at those values or, and I don't think they mean anything to us. What would be important to us, is, is there a future use of some kind that we see for that? And don't forget, we're allowed to put, uh, um, housing on a substandard lot if we, uh, think it affords it, so.
Yeah.
So we have some.
Yeah, I think we, I think we need to study this and really take a look at this, because it should really just. Because the town also is looking, you know, that draft that, that you, you're gonna have printed from Jonathan and myself, there's so much stuff in there that maybe, you know what I mean? Maybe some of this stuff, I don't know, could be used for some of the open space stuff to pick.
Well, we're definitely not for the open space plan.
Completely?
We're looking to extend, otherwise we have to ask for funding to redo that plan next year.
Oh, I got you, so we're just looking at extending.
Extend it three years. Extend it three years, we're not redoing the plan, we're not looking to redo anything in it, it's just a status. We're not looking to make recommendations that we do things differently there. So, uh, I would really try to keep that, like, to a minimum as far as, like, if you see something that you really disagree with, that you really think the town should not, we should be telling Parks and Rec, don't do that.
You're still talking about the open space.
Well, Jeff brought that.
Oh, yeah, I just, I'm, I'm just saying, like, how does any of this stuff, would that come into play? But, but what Danielle's saying was just looking for a three-year extension right now.
Right, right.
Let's not muddy the water, let's move along, nothing to see here.
Well, I think the healthy recommendation is a valid one, um, and I don't know if, uh, is that any, uh, any other, uh, things, cause I know the school department a couple of times wanted fields. And then we, fields, they wanted soccer fields and, you know, it's, if we could get more of those or. I don't know if they'll have any input into this, because I know they do with the original one.
Well.
On the open space plan.
Yeah, the open space plan.
So it's whoever, whatever board or commission was the responsible party identified at the time by that committee. So it was either Parks and Recreation, Conservation Commission, Select Board, a couple of them were CPC. They were things like our complete streets work and, you know, sidewalks and things like that. There weren't very many of those. These are all things that had previously been identified as goals, many of them are done. Many of them are in progress or will be forever ongoing, because we're always going to be looking for certain, certain, certain things. And other things the Parks and Recreation Department has said, we'd rather not pursue this now, or we're not sure what we're doing, so no status update is available. I mean, that's really the extent of what they're looking for from us. It just, it extends our availability of, um, our eligibility for state grants for another three years. Cause we only remain eligible for Parks and Recreation related grant funding if we have a current open space plan. So this buys us another three years before we have to pay for another one, there are like thirty thousand dollars to do. That's why we, so we would be going to June Town Meeting, asking for money and then doing the plan over the course of that year, otherwise we can wait three years. So that's kind of the purpose of that, um, this, I mean, certainly one of the goals in there always has been town should seek, you know, open space, new open space to acquire, and that's ComCom and Parks and Rec does that. In this case, I mean, if we saw certain properties that we think are especially beautiful and should be kept for the town and shouldn't be sold to anyone, you could make that recommendation, like the CPC believes that this should be held, you know, forever, um, by the town.
So I, I go back to my original thing, I think we, uh, we just, well, look it over. To next meeting, but any rec, write your recommendations down, I mean, maybe you said a bit of ahead of time, we'll bring them to the meeting and we'll look at them. All right, being, uh, being past seven thirty, um, as, as everybody else said. Maybe past seven thirty, um, we're gonna do the continued public hearing for two forty-nine Havel Street, seven Charles Street, thirty and thirty-one Amber Road, and depending on your subdivision, do you have a request to continue?
Yes, and I'll just explain the reason for that is, um, the applicant's attorney, uh, attorney man requested additional time just to finish going over the draft conditional approval. I put the draft additional approval in the one drive file, but she said that because many of our, um, covenant uh, provisions and the conditions and the decision, many of them were written with single-family house lots in mind, and because these are condominiums, she just needed to adjust the language to be short, and she just needed a little bit of additional time to do that, so she asked to come back to me.
All right, okay. So, um, I know there was a request about name changes, are we gonna move that off to the next meeting?
Um, well, they're not here to discuss it, um, if you had anything you wanted me to tell them regarding the name change, I could do that.
Well, I know, uh, Tom, Tom has your, uh, call me, he asked me about, um, changing the name of one of the streets to, uh, to his mother, that Romeo name, like just maybe Romeo Ray or something like that. So I know we just, we don't usually do that, but we just did Germano. It was tough to say we don't do it, because we just did it. But I think it's a valid request and I really partially agree to the whole situation, because you was our board member for a long time, just, and just a very influential word number, she just, uh, brought us a lot of information, that, and the historical commission and history. And in fact, brought us the, the historical name list and from, um, that Romeo and, uh, and, um, so I don't know, what's the rest of it, boy, think, uh, they, uh, they with her enough to know what her contribution to this situation was?
I, I know, well, like, well, a limited amount, because I don't know, you've been there for so long, but she, you know, I remember going in front of the planning board when I first got into town, and she was there, used to visit her every year and one of the, uh, you know, during the first historical, uh, the Apple Fest and all that stuff, you know, so always very nice and helpful. But yeah, I knew a lot, heard a lot about her from my wife's family, who grew up in, you know, living in North Reading, so, yeah. Very important figure.
She brought a lot of humanity to the meetings, I mean, we get hust, we get, talking about something and she reminds us of the people that are would be impacted and remind us of the history of the town and, uh, and just, we, yeah. You know, we definitely got our lessons taught to us by her, she was.
She was a hot ticket.
Yeah. Very dedicated to the town, though, dedicated to the best interests of the town. So, uh, does anybody have any, any comments on that, I mean, any interest in that?
Uh, which road would be the name change?
Maybe let them kind of decide or.
Well, probably whatever one is closest to, uh, to her house, which is still in the Romeo family, so. So, um, yeah.
I guess my only question would be, and I don't, I don't know her, I'm sure it sounds like she's a wonderful person and did a lot for the town. If there's any significance to the name of the road that they're changing.
No, the names of the roads are, they now are what, were, uh, the previous owner of the property's kids.
I, I didn't know that.
I think the current developer, I think it's, um, uh, Mr. Goldberg's children.
Oh, okay, I didn't even know that.
Yeah, he mentioned that to me. Just so you know, usually the CPC names the road, you know, here's the historic list, do you want to take a look? And I did pass along that email we got from Tom Romeo, um, to, uh, to attorney man with the suggestion that that. I hadn't received any, received any feedback, I have a feeling it will be like more of a discussion at, at the next meeting, um, but.
You, okay. Yeah, well, that's getting basically what my question was, is you should, we just have to down. But I would like to, I wanted to just bring it up and let everybody else and say, uh, uh, know that we were looking at that, so.
So would you be, would you name it, would the proposed be like Patricia or are you Patricia Lane?
No, I think, uh, well, you know, first of all, Frank, her husband Frank, was on the police department. And he was, he was, oh, he was a hard ticket too, he was really, you know, he's good with the kids, you know, he did, he, they would always send him out for the kids. Cause they, you know, he act like a, like a odd guy and everything, but then in, in the end. Yeah, he was, he was, he's a wonderful police officer, so the whole, you know, the whole family's done a lot for this town all overall.
Absolutely.
So, uh, that's why I think it's appropriate, so. Will we have a agreement, I mean, you guys okay with it?
I think it's a great idea to make the recommendation.
And, uh, I would say whichever one's closest to that was.
Okay, I'll pass along.
You missed it on the last one, remember?
Yeah.
So it's top of mind this time.
Yeah. Um, okay, do, uh, we have.
Ready for motion?
Yep.
Uh, I moved at the CPC vote to continue the public hearing for two forty-nine Havel Street, seven Charles Street, thirty and thirty-one Amber Road until Tuesday, September sixteen, twenty twenty-five, at eight thirty P M.
And a motion and a second, ready for the discussion, hearing not all in favor, please say aye. Four in favor, all with no opposed. Okay, um, then next up would be thirty-five Main Street.
Good evening, everyone, how you guys doing? Work from, from lunch, uh, here, we were doing thirty-five Main Street, we met last month. Um, all from that meeting that we met, we, we proposed two layouts, one with six simbays and a kitchen and bar. And the second option was just eight simbays or no kitchen or bar. Uh, after that meeting, I did speak to Bob Bracy and Gary Knob from the Board of Health and the Building Commission. Um, and we decided to go with the second option, which is eight days with no kitchen, no bar. Um, to really focus on the golf facility and given that, that entertainment factor. Um, so that's what we're presenting today for thirty-five Main Street.
Okay. Do you still intend to, uh, it looks like you have a lot of seating tables and.
The seating, the majority, the, I'm seating will be for the bay, so each bay will have four seats per bay. Um, the middle section of the lounge, uh, that's just a placeholder for design. We, we don't need to have that for seating, I don't foresee seeing people coming into lounge, especially without the bar.
Well, my question was going to be, do you plan on bringing food in from outside?
No, we're not. It's just gonna be strictly golf.
Vending machines, soda, water?
No. This is, this is all her conversation following up with the Board of Health. Um, there wasn't, for our business model, we think this is gonna be the best way to present what we want to deliver. Um, ideally, we can do the B Y O B and order, but just the logistics of that with, with each.
Well, I wasn't thinking so much about alcohol, I was thinking about, it's just a bottle of water.
Uh, I mean, I, we won't, I can talk to the Board of Health about, but I don't, I don't want to add an addition just to serve water, I mean, I would, I would love to.
Kitchen to serve, serve water and soda.
I, I mean, if, if we can, we definitely will.
Yeah, I think vending machines and stuff wouldn't.
Yeah, so, you know, I'm not trying to run their business or anything, but, but I want to see it be successful too.
Yeah, we, we definitely, we definitely.
We don't want to give you a permit to do something that you, that will fail, you know, I mean, you, you need a little bit of something there, maybe you'll look at it.
We, I can definitely talk to Bob in terms of what our options are in terms of kind of basic. I was actually talking to my partner Bob the way up here, maybe we have a water fountain in there just to have the option for the patrons. But, um, I know there's a lot of regulations that come with.
That, if you're gonna, if, but a water fountain is probably gonna use, uh, town water. You don't like it. So I just think, you know, yeah, you might want to pursue the, uh, the vending machine thing. So just order and water, you know, so you'll have something.
Snack, something to keep the energy up while you're whacking away at balls.
Yeah, see what they'll allow.
Yeah, definitely, uh, we, we would definitely not be opposed to that.
Ask that question.
I will.
Okay, um, we don't, that eliminates our outstanding issues, you might encourage them there, so you have draft approval?
Thank you, I have a draft approval, um, I put one condition in it and that was, um, requested by the building inspector that the, the striping on the, um, pavement markings and the parking spaces have become very faded. Um, I shared that draft of approval, um, with the applicant, I know that he's concerned about having a condition in there to his specific tendency where it is really the responsibility of the owner to actually maintain that it was part of the original site plan review approval for that site, so the, you know. I know the building inspector would like to have that as a condition in this approval, either way though, um, that is something that he and I should be able to kind of go to the owner and say, you do need to fix this, because it was part of your original approval and it's part of the site plan for this property, um, so I, I, I'm willing to leave it up to you whether you think it's appropriate.
The building inspector certainly has the ability to, to, uh, draw that line and say, okay, listen, you do it, fix it or I'm gonna shut you down. And, you know, you, you create, you, you have an unsafe parking lot, and I'm not letting anybody in here, so you best fix it, you know. I think he has the ability to do that, I, I do believe that it's his responsibility, not their responsibility, so.
We could take that from the.
Yeah, it doesn't need to be in this, I don't think, I agree.
Okay, thank you, yeah. Me too, so.
Like that, um, I think, how was the only other, um, special condition?
If the Board of Health is gonna allow them to have your vending machines, would that need to be within our approval, correct?
I wouldn't, because it's possible the Board of Health could say no, or that you couldn't get, there are licenses that you have to get for that, so I wouldn't tie it to our approval. Think it'd be nice, but I, it should be a.
No, that's okay, I just want to make sure that I, you know, dot of my i's, cross my t's here, I want, you know, again, to give you a permit to do something that will fail does not do us any good at all.
Right.
Everything else in there, just, um, they're standard conditions, um, I put a note that the parking is now the same parking requirement as was previously approved in the first site plan approval, because they're not doing the bar and kitchen area anymore, um. And then everything else is, um, uh, to record the decision, um, further changes like signage or lighting have to be submitted for further permitting, um, adhere to all, you know, the department's requirements, um. I didn't put in any of the conditions that go with exterior changes and construction, because all of their changes will be interior. And I put that all of the terms and conditions of the original site plan approval on the, um, oh, I put twenty twenty-seven and that's correct. It was actually twenty, um, I'll get the date of the original site plan approval, but that still is in effect, um, that original site.
So the other, the other question that I added, that, that I don't know if we've actually addressed to signage. It's not, do they, are they a place on an existing sign or?
Um, usually for just a replacement, um, they will come in for a sign permit to the, to the building department. As long as it stays within the requirements of the zoning, usually it's just issues for either a refacing or in a plaza, just adding. Um, so usually, yeah, just a signage permit.
Okay, you know, you gotta do that, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, okay, anybody have any more comments or questions on this, or ready to approve?
So I noticed that here, um, I think that's really cool that you have it A D A excessively.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's cool.
Yeah, thank you.
If somebody, you know, this, a lot, I, I just never even put it together, but, um, I thought that was new. And, uh, the second point is, are you sure you can't put pizza oven in here somewhere?
So is it just that Bob, Bob just persuaded you that?
No, no.
Too many hoops to jump through.
Hey, no, he, uh, definitely was very helpful, I think, um, just for our business model, coming back in the space that we're working with. Um, and it makes the most sense with this, this concept.
Well, then you got, you'd have to have a restriction, you know, you start having to modify the subject system, you know.
Well, when, if you don't, let me ask me, so what do you do in Sagas, what do you have for beverages?
Uh, Sagas, we have a full kitchen and full bar.
They're on sword, they have severance.
I mean, this, this is cold turkey, though. So, yeah.
A restriem, I have another question to affect, but what are the hours of operation do you guys?
For, in Sagas, we are seven A M. to ten P M. Monday through Thursday. Friday, sorry, Sunday, seven A M. to eleven, but we're gonna extend that this year. Um, for this concept, we will have to discuss it and see what the, the demand is, but, um, we would maybe model that concept depending on the demand.
I don't really, you're, you're indoors.
Right.
So I'm not sure, other than traffic situations are, because there is a neighborhood out behind you there. So, um, you know, that, um, hours of operation would be good to put in there if we, uh, could. You know, um.
Do you find an increase in, uh, usage in the wintertime, is that?
Yeah, that's, that's our season.
Yeah.
From November all the way to April.
Then Danielle, should we put a, we should put hours of operation in there?
If we would like to.
I think, I think we should. Um, rather than having somebody say, they were over there at midnight, two o'clock in the morning, hanging around in there, so.
It would be, I'm sorry, can we say again, they are.
Uh, well, I mean, I, I. What would you like for, what would be uh optimum hours of operation? Again, realizing there's a neighborhood out behind you, so.
I mean, I think we should do the same hours if possible.
As, yeah, I don't.
Yeah.
I just.
So seven and ten.
Or.
Sure.
I mean, the without the bar, the the golfers would be really just golfers. So, but the thing is, if you look outside now, it's, it's pitch it's dark, so the, the late night golfers do come by and enter round takes, you know, four, four guys indoors, they're gonna take three to four hours depending on your play.
Yeah.
So we wanna get the after work uh consumer, seven to ten, seven to eleven would be ideal.
Yeah, those same hours you have in your other store, I mean, your other location is probably fine to us. I don't think, I've seen the issue with it.
Is it, with the simulators, because I've never used one of them, um it's, you have different courses, you go play nine holes, eighteen holes, so it's not like you're gonna go out and hit balls for an hour. You're going out to play a full round of golf.
Yeah, so there's nine holes, uh there's part threes, there's three, over three hundred fifty courses all around the world, all the famous ones like Pebble Beach.
And they're all loadable on your simulators.
Right, and there's R T mode, there's range mode, there's um, there's a practice, uh where you can watch your own video, review it, slow motion and um A I analyzer on there that will break down your screen. Um.
There's been A I coaching, you guys, do you have other real life coaches that come, that come in with people and
Right.
they hire me outside or you guys provide coaching or?
We, we do have uh coaches at our current facility and that's what we will.
Okay.
Yeah, this, the system, I mean, is, is state of the art, meaning, right now, our location, I think we're there's a, there's a national, a worldwide competition for three hundred thousand that's sponsored by the inspector. And for the winners, for the players, so we are ranking tenth right now, um with top twenty means to the the competition.
Hmm.
Uh so, once this location goes live, you know, anyone that choose to get into the ready, they could definitely qualify for that too. It's um the top four players from each location. And, yeah, it's a, it's a very interactive, very uh, it's, it's a really fun time.
Okay, could you repeat your hours?
Yeah.
Uh so Monday through Friday would be seven A M to ten P M, Monday through, I mean, Monday to Thursday. And Friday, Saturday, Sunday would be seven A M to eleven P M.
Um seven A M to eleven P M.
That's correct.
And I think that's okay. And if you wanted to, if for some reason you wanted to change it, you could come back.
Oh, that's okay.
But I do, I do wanna have a limit, you know, so that uh, so that there is something, you know.
For, for.
This is my job to make sure everything is all.
Can we just do Monday through Sunday, seven to eleven?
Pardon?
Can we just do Monday through Sunday, seven A M to eleven P M? Sort of thing.
Yeah, I think that, I, I don't see a problem with that.
Um Monday through, so Monday through Sunday, seven.
That were your permission, if you want it, it goes to you, you can.
Right, yeah, yeah.
And I looked at, looking at the, the map with the, you mentioned the houses, but all the parking is in the front on the side, so they're not like driving around the building, they're parking next to people's houses.
But, but, no, it's a travel, not getting, getting in and out of your cars and like that, so uh, but again, I, I, my, my feeling is that without the bar and the food that you're not gonna have as many late night people.
Yeah.
There's, I think they may come in earlier and then you're gonna leave them someplace where they can get some food or something, whatever, so. So I think that the, the general learning is not significant in the end. In my estimation.
I got an idea. A post dinner nine holes.
I got an idea, Warren. How about we pack a food truck out there? Just stay in with me, Warren.
Well, you know, I think the problem is uh that the waste um that comes from, I mean, if, as long as they stayed outside, we'll be okay, but if soon during the food inside, now you're.
I love food trucks.
Republic's still striking, we got, we need some of that gross stuff away.
Are these the ones?
Are they? I don't know. I think so. So the, is it resolved?
Regular pickups.
Yeah, yeah.
But who's at the end now? Is it relevant to this conversation?
All right, um. So I think we covered everything here, I'm just thinking that all the way through here. Um.
One more question.
Yes.
Right. If everything goes well, when do you guys plan on opening?
If everything goes well, I
We do wanna catch the winter season if we can.
Before Thanksgiving would be ideal.
Gotcha.
Yeah, once we get the green light from uh the town, North Reading will be ready to go.
Awesome.
And that construction, whatever's required to do that, could, is feasible to get done?
Yes.
In that amount of time?
Yeah.
Cool.
All right, there's no other questions, I can entertain a motion.
I've got one. I move C P C vote to approve the application for thirty five Main Street.
Second.
But why don't we say as amended this evening?
Yes, as amended this evening.
As amended this evening.
Thank you.
Very second.
And we have motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye, aye.
Let's break a trade for in favor, the middle votes. There you go.
Thank you so much.
Just a few little things that I need to be, yeah.
Yeah, no, that's good. I like the layout too, it's very simple. Well done.
Yeah.
See, it's a cooler concept than I thought it was.
I, I think it's a fantastic idea.
Yeah, they're very cool.
I feel bad.
Oh, they're awesome dude.
I feel bad that they don't have at least some kind of refreshment situation.
Especially in playing.
They'll figure that out as time goes on, Warren, a little bit, and they'll try to.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I mean, again, the sewer thing, just, I mean, they're as soon as they start doing anything that's food inside, you run into the problem with the, the uh, the uh restrap and all that stuff, then how much is the subject system designed for?
Who's the storage place, so very little.
Right, yeah.
It's probably pretty small. But I think the walk before your ride approach is probably good and.
Yeah. That's why I try to encourage them to try to get at least some vending, you know, they need to do something there. You know, I wanna see them succeed, you know.
It's state of the art, you guys come and
Yeah.
hit some balls you won't believe, it's unbelievable, you know, it'll do good.
Well, we wanna.
Thank you very much.
We wanna help them get
Yeah, much appreciate, yeah.
Successful business, you know, I mean, we, we wanna do pro business, you know.
Yeah, so would.
Okay, there you go, I think we did.
Thank you, thank you. Thanks, Josh, thanks, Marissa.
So uh do you have any Z B As?
The only, I go for C B A, not for their regular meeting, but the twenty Elm Street application has actually come in now.
Okay.
So I put that in the folder for you to review. If you should have any comments at any point, you can send them to me and I'll pass them to the C B A, but I am arranging for them, I'm for the Z B A, I'm arranging for them to have it peer reviewed by uh G M two for traffic and stormwater. So we don't have to feel pressured to provide all of the relevant comments for, you know, every aspect of this project because it will be peer reviewed for the Z B A.
Yeah.
So, but if you do have comments, thoughts, anything you'd like me to pass along, I can do that.
Okay, I noticed that we changed the uh planning administrators' update to all the new business.
Oh, I didn't realize they both weren't on there.
No, they're not.
They both should be on there. I can give an update anyway, I mean, I'm girl in business if you would like.
Um.
Um. Old business.
It disappeared, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Um, just a couple of dates, um so I just mentioned the twenty Elm Street uh project has come in, the Z B A is going to be discussing that at their meeting on September eleventh at six P M at the Distance Learning Lab, um. The plans are all, they're in your folder, but they're also posted online, um. We have, coming up at our next meeting, our C P C meeting is um September sixteenth. I have scheduled the public hearing for the zoning amendments um that were, we were asked, were recommended by the A G's office for the floodplain bylaw.
Hmm.
Um so just wanna make sure that at least three of us are there on the sixteenth of September, like all are fitting on meeting there, so. Um also on the sixteenth, um we had talked about doing that night for the Central Street sidewalk discussion. I thought we would just carve out the first hour of the meeting from seven o'clock to eight o'clock, the town engineers available. And I show the plans that we have, take some questions and get some feedback. I, it's very early because we don't have a funding source really yet, but it would be important to know from the neighborhood whether they're still very supportive of it as we go in to ask for.
I'm really looking forward to that process.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, that, I know what happened when they finished that up sidewalk on Hable Street. I mean, you know, I, it's, it's a, it's in constant use and needed to be done for so many years and now people all the way up to town line can walk on the sidewalk all the way to the center. You know, it's just, uh, it's just, it was just something that needed to be done.
Yeah, that was a great project. I have talked with um the town engineer about, um probably would be submitted under D P W, but with our help, um a request, actually um we kind of encouraged to ask for capital funds for uh the project and um for some segment of it, um it's a lot of money, it's probably about a million and a half dollars. And it also possibly including a design phase for the, for, so we only have the design so far for Park to Spruce. Possibly looking for design for Spruce to North, um so that's something I'll be working with the town engineer to, together to task. Um and also to pursue whatever grants might be available. I mentioned the Safe Roots to School Construction Grant, which might be available to us next year or something. Um but I think it would be great to hear from the neighborhood and they seem.
Yeah, we need some grant money to build this, because there aren't any other good funding sources anymore, really.
For, for construction, it's really tough, um but the Safe Roots to School program seems like they, they do award pretty substantial grants, more than the main street does. So that seemed to be a good fit.
Okay.
Um. So that's it, for me.
Thanks.
Warren, I have a question, sidewalk question. When, you know how, um when you have new sidewalks, but then they have their little ramp with the rubber pad, like built into the
Yeah.
Yeah, the strip then, um is that stuff, because I don't really know a lot about sidewalks. I mean, I see them, I don't know, is that like a special?
That's so that if you are, if you're uh sighted and maybe you can feel a.
Oh, gotcha, okay. I had no idea why those were banned.
Yeah, no, those are for, those are for people who don't see well, uh blind or something, they can find the entrance to the sidewalk.
Thank you.
Yeah.
They're cast iron, and they're kind of pumped.
Yeah.
Yeah, sometimes they just, sometimes go with just the rusted, you know, and some others have the visual, you know, the.
You ever come in?
I actually, I wanted to bring up a new point of business, or is there a timeline?
Well, it's not on our agenda, so it's not something that we can actually deal with.
Well, so I, my, my only question, I, I come, I, I understand that that we're postponing the, the conversation about the Seven Charles Street and Ever Road, but this was a, gonna be a, a different question regarding a different intersection in town. Do it, am I not able to, to bring it up at this meeting?
Well, um is your concern that the intersection needs to be upgraded?
So my concern, um mine is Ryan Brooks, I'm on Two Man thing road, my, my concern is actually Hero Street and Marblehead Street.
Yeah, yeah. We're actually rich there lately.
It was, it was that, that awful accident two weeks ago, and then beginning of summer, my wife and my daughter witnessed first one from the scene, the same exact accident, two cars completely totaled. And, and when I was driving here on North Street, it's like, what, what, what the town has done with, with north and central, I think it's crazy. It's a dangerous intersection, we knew, oh, it's an intersection, you're coming up, you've got lights, you've got, here's your speed.
Yeah, I think it would be, I think, you know, of course the, the I don't think any of this is lost on the D P W or the police department. In other words, I think they realize that that's probably an intersection that we're gonna have to deal with at some point, it probably wouldn't happen here. I have it at D P W. Um and slide board, because somebody's gotta approve the money or find the money to do it.
Well, I, I was gonna suggest too, um I don't know if it's on our current complete streets plan, but we do have the option with our engineering department to, so the complete streets plan is a list of um traffic improvements that we would like to see to increase safety and they could save her for pedestrians and vehicles and bikes and everything. Um I can check and see if that intersection is already on the plan. If it's not, we can probably get it added and then, then it will become eligible for complete streets funding if we are successful in applying for grants. So it might just be, that can be something that I can work with our D P W on to at least increase our chances of getting a grant to, because I, I know they have their list of dangerous intersections they're trying to get to. I'll, I'll mention that you came tonight and that you were attracted and um, while we don't really control where the money goes for intersections, we are involved in sometimes asking for grants for, for these kinds of improvements, so I will definitely.
Took us a room and get Chestnut Street done there, but that's, that's pretty good now, you know.
Yep. No, I mean Chestnut Street and the Hable Street, I think is awesome.
A lot of, a lot of times we run into opposition from people, they don't want, not another traffic lane, you know, I'll never get out of my driveway, and then you find out that once the traffic comes there they have big wide open spaces to get out of the driveway, you're like, oh, now I see.
Yeah, it, it was very apparent after that intersection, and I mean, you know, times are changing, we've got quiet electric cars that are faster, they're heavier. You know, thirty about miles an hour, people go from Andover and they don't know that there's a school right there, there's a dim yellow.
They're just back up to street in Andover on, and you know, on that, that four way intersection up there, when they put the four way stop in, people coming from, from Andover, from North Andover, you know. Um, they, when you said the stop sign there, they would blow right through it all the time, it took a while for everybody to realize, oh, there's this stop sign there, so.
Yeah, it's just, it, I had to, I had to at least, I don't, I don't know, so thank you for, for educating me on that.
And you're welcome. I mean, there are lots of ways that, that the town can try for funding for various things, but this is one grant program, I think, that I've been involved with because it is kind of intricate with planning, so I can definitely see if we can get that added to our big streets plan and then try to give her some funds if that's something that, you know, works out. Um it's, it's one, it's one option. But I'll tell the D P W anyway that you came to our meeting.
Okay, so you didn't, you didn't waste your time, okay?
Thank you, I appreciate it.
No, my, I mean, and then, then with whatever the, the, the traffic survey that they're doing at, with Charles Street, that's, that's the other big like, someone's going to die with the cars coming from Aspen Road towards Charles Street.
You know.
Speed limit is thirty five miles per hour, you're going down a hill.
Yeah.
A big suburban S U V, it's a patch of ice, someone's gonna get killed because you're, you're walking your dog up the sidewalk. And someone's gonna try to make that turn right where Charles Street is.
Hmm.
It's so, they're, I mean.
Well, they've been doing it all the time for quite a while and it's not really been that, that whole, it's all developed into this, so this like a uh, an alternate route, if you will. If the, if that street is all icy and everything, you can go down Deerfield and come through that way and never be on more than about a six or eight percent grade.
Yeah.
So I mean, that, that, but that, that, that connection was was in the plan all along, so, so there is some, there is, you know, a way to, to get around some of that, so.
I think that, that when, when I go through some of these intersections and I see my speed running, I'm like, wow, oh my gosh, I'm, I'm driving way too fast. And you see a kid on a bicycle, and it's like thirty five miles an hour, and a little kid's on a bicycle, it's a lot different than twenty nine, so.
Well, okay, we'll uh, we'll, we'll note that, thank you.
Great, thank you so much.
Can I pick you back off that first name?
Thanks.
I know, I know this is the right.
We're not trying to carry, go ahead.
Park Street. From Concord, all the way to Wilmington, there are zero speed limit signs towards Wilmington. I have measured it out, it's a mile, just under a mile long, but passified Oakdale, which is a side street that leads to Louisville's speed. It gets a ton of traffic going in and out of that, um but coming out of Oak, Oakdale.
No, it's not.
You get Southwood going in.
There's South, yeah, Southway around.
Yeah.
Yes, South, sorry. Um Southwood, a lot of traffic coming in and out of there. There are no speed limit signs between Concord Street, where Park and Concord split and the Wilmington downwind. There are three. Plus, the speed limit um sign tells you how fast you're going coming into town from Wilmington.
Hmm.
But nothing going the other way. And I've spoken to a few people in the police department, who basically said sorry, that's on the state, there's nothing we can do.
It's not.
And, so yeah, the problem is, it's.
That's not state.
Yeah, they have, I am asked, and they said, nope, that comes, the street signs come down to the state. For whatever reason, it comes down to something to do with the state.
They get approval from the state to be able to close.
Yeah.
Yeah, they need approval from the state, be- because you can't say, well, I think there should be a twenty mile an hour speed limit.
I don't even.
Or I think there should be a sixty mile.
I'm not asking anybody to change this.
The state.
I live, I live right, right there on that stretch. And I see cars driving past my house at fifty miles an hour all the time. And when you come up over the, the crest right before my house, right before you hit it, you can't tell if there's anybody on the road on the other side.
I think.
And my wife has almost gotten blindside a handful of times backing out of our driveway. And cars have had to come to a scathing halt because they don't see her pulling up till you get to that. And I'll be standing in my driveway and I will see people lie by going into Wilmington. People will speed up when they get to that point.
And I'll be standing in my driveway, and I always see people lie by going into Wilmington, people speed up when they get to that point.
I can ask the traffic lady officer about that.
Yeah, and I, I spoke to him, and I spoke to the police.
Did you have, okay.
And the answer I basically got was, once those signs are put in, after about thirty days, people don't even see them anymore, and then we pay attention, they're in the gears.
Yeah, there's one, there's one speed limit on fifty-seven Concord is one, but it's heading back into North Bay, it's four, forty-one.
There are, there are three signs and the speed clock, whatever you want to call it. And I had asked, that was, that speed clock was put in because I brought this up to the town. And originally, they had put it on the other side of the telephone pole, so you knew how fast you were going, leaving town. It was like that for me, yeah, until I complained about it again, and I'm like, why is this telling you how fast you're going at the town line, leaving town? Right? Like, people just want to know how fast they're going, getting out of North Bay, and so they finally turned the ramp, like, okay. Fine, but that still wasn't helping the problem, nobody knows how fast you're going, heading west, out of town, which is like.
Well, you can, you can talk to the same job, so, and see if they, ever, ever take a look at that.
But it's.
We just need to note your name and address for the.
I'm sorry, Phil Cannell, four seven nine Park Street.
Thank you. How do you spell your last name?
C A N M L F.
Thank you.
So, um, Danielle, on the, um, on the naming of the street, Romeo, I think it would be, uh, I'm just thinking about this, what sounds like, I think Romeo Way would be less. Romeo Road doesn't really work on your street, no.
Too much iteration.
You're waiting. It flows down that way, hmm. That way she, when she asks, she won't ask the question.
What's that?
She'll ask the question, what do you want me to say, just Romeo?
Romeo Way, I'll, I'll, I'll have that on the track.
Yeah, you know, Jill, when she'll say, what do you, what do you, what do you want us to say?
While, while we're on traffic, sorry.
Yeah, no, sorry.
I have a question. On a state road, so like, say, on Wall Street or on sixty-two, whatever, state road.
Sixty-two is a county road.
It's a county road?
Yes.
Oh, county road, okay.
Numbered route.
It's a numbered route, but it's a county road.
Okay, so does that, to, to, so, and the reason why I ask is because Main and Lowell, that you're coming up Lowell to Main and you have the Y, people always take the left on the wrong side, they're on smashing the people and you know, there's always an accident like every two weeks there, it's ridiculous.
The town owns that, though. Not the Main Street part, but that part of sixty-two is town.
You're actually the section of Lowell?
No, not the whole intersection. Like, Main Street is still owned by the state, but the part of Lowell, we own.
Okay, this, like, every couple of weeks, there's an accident there. It's crazy, there really, I can hear the fire trucks from my house and stuff. And, um, the problem is, when you're coming out of Lowell towards Main and you're by the subway, people turn the left, they come right out, they don't go around the island.
Yeah, they do to kids too.
I know they do to kids, but.
Game places.
There's tons of accidents there, it's ridiculous. It's just ridiculous.
That is on the D P W list of intersections to.
I don't see how it couldn't be for the frequency.
I can tell, I'm sure it's on our frequent crash.
There was just one, um, was it yesterday? It was pretty bad. You hear Bill, and then Sandy goes, she starts counting, wee, you know, it's like thirty seconds, a minute.
Yeah, go right by my office all day long, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But, yeah, that's a really, really bad layout or something there, I don't know. People always turn on the wrong side of the road there, and get a head on brush, it's a head on every time. Anyway, just throwing that out there.
We'll mention that at the end as well.
All right, I think we're, uh, I think we're all set, unless it was at the downside, we're here in the meeting. And thank you all for coming, thank you.
Thank you, Warren.